At each regular monthly board meeting for members of the public to address the board. On the signup sheet has been provided. Individuals wishing to address the board have signed up. When speaking, please identify yourself first, speak clearly and loudly enough for everyone to hear you. As we're still following executive order, community comments are zooming in tonight. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a group concern. And supplement verbal presentations with written reports if necessary or desired. Personal comments toward a board member. Any member of the community staff or Board of Education member will not be considered appropriate. All right, I would like to begin then. The first person signed up is Mrs. Denise Conde. Is she available?
Okay, I'm here. Do you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Hello, my name is Denise Conde. We, the community, understands the facts related to COVID-19. State mandates and recommendations of the CDC related to school openings along with the purpose of this board and serving and serving the stakeholders in this community. Yes, individuals may contract COVID-19, however, the likelihood of fatality is rare with the CDC's latest findings in regard to the COVID-19 infection fatality ratio. Are we too humble to take this new information into account and ask for restrictions to be rolled back? Are board members willing to fully represent the whole child without political bias? Our children are entitled, entitled to an in-person education five days a week and social activities outside the confines of the school without threats from the superintendent and board members to ensure we are taking the whole child approach to mental wellness as also recommended by the CDC. This board is in violation of the principle for board members, which is to assure the opportunity for high-quality education for every student based on the CDC's recommendation, as well as representing the entire community without fear or favor. The state classroom guidelines are six feet or physical barriers in classrooms. The district did not ask stakeholders if they wanted in-person learning five days a week. Instead, nine new remote teachers costing over a half a million dollars per year were hired. Money could have been allocated to buy partitions allowing in-
Ms. Conde, please pause for a moment.
Pardon me?
Yeah, pause it.
It could. I don't know, the speakers just are picking her up. I don't know if it's her mic or our system. Mrs. Conde, I just want to check in to see what's on your-
Pardon me?
Are you there, Mrs. Conde?
Yes, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Mrs. Conde, are you there?
I am, yes.
Can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
She was there.
No.
Mrs. Conde, can you hear us?
Do you want me to get that on?
Mrs. Conde-
Can you hear me? Yes, I'm right here. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
If you can hear us, please hold on for a moment and we will allow you to start your statement over again.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm going to, for anyone that I don't understand-
Mrs. Conde, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Is she still talking? Can they hear us?
I'm just trying to-
Yeah, she doesn't look like she's- Oh, I'm just looking at them.
It's not playing anything through my sound, is it sending it up there?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hold on one second.
Pardon me? Hi, I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna ask if, could you please start your statement over? We'll reset the timer.
Sure, absolutely. Are we ready to go? Hi. I can't hear anything. I'm not sure if you guys are speaking or it's just quiet. Can you hear me?
I think both of the districts are on mute.
Okay, I did hear that. I just double checking before I begin speaking.
You could start, Mrs. Conde.
Okay, you guys can hear me, right?
Yes, we could hear you much better now.
Okay, excellent. All right, so again, my name is Denise Conde. We, the community, understands the facts related to COVID-19 state mandates and recommendations of the CDC related to school openings along with the purpose of this board and serving the stakeholders in this community. Yes, individuals may contract COVID-19, however, the likelihood of fatality is rare with the CDC's latest findings in regard to the COVID-19 infection fatalities ratio. Are we too humble to take this new information into account and ask for restrictions to be rolled back? Are board members willing to fully represent the whole child without political bias? Our children are entitled, entitled to an in-person education five days a week and social activities outside the confines of the school without threats from the superintendent and board members to ensure we are taking the whole child approach to mental wellness as also recommended by the CDC. This board is in violation of the principle for board members, which is to assure the opportunity for high-quality education for every student based on the CDC's recommendation, as well as representing the entire community without fear or favor. The state classroom guidelines are six feet or physical barriers in classrooms. The district did not ask stakeholders if they wanted in-person learning five days a week. Instead, nine new remote teachers costing over a half a million dollars per year were hired. Money could have been allocated to buy partitions allowing in-person learning five days a week, which is best practice according to the CDC and New York State guidelines. A stakeholder survey was created by stakeholders. The data collected found 67% of stakeholders prefer in-person learning five days a week. The overwhelming majority of stakeholders feel that parents hold the ultimate decision in regards to their children. Feel it is not appropriate for board members to scream down others on social media. Feel it is not appropriate for members to call children entitled. Feel it is not appropriate for members to harass and threaten local business owners hosting private events. Feel this is an overreach of power. Feel it's not appropriate to censor Loopport employees. Feel members are in violation of principles for members. Prefer the whole child approach. Do not feel Casarian members represent parental beliefs and best practices. Feel Casarian members use fear intimidation tactics. Do not find you approachable for unbiased conversations. Find mask breaks should be based on individual needs. Feel students should not be reprimanded for pulling down masks to drink water and feel teachers are fearful of you when allowing mask breaks and sips of water. Two members of this board have consistently violated multiple principles for school board members. These members have acted as individuals selfishly and with disrespect when telling stakeholders to shut up about sports, presenting a consistent conflict of interest to the stakeholders, unethical, demoralizing, and destructive behaviors. For these reasons, I call for the removal of these two board members.
Mr. Coppins, you can turn on your sound now. And you could start your video if you choose. I don't see a microphone next to him. Mr. Coppins, if you're joining from a phone, you can do call-in audio if you want. I don't see a mic next to your phone. Or next to your name. There we go, we had two Brett Coppins.
Hi Nick, can you hear me now?
There he is, we got it.
Gotta love technology. Thank you for your patience. I apologize deeply. I'm sorry, my screen looks much different than how my Zoom has been personally with my students, but my name's Brett Coppins. I come before you tonight. I, I just wanted to, I really wanted to, there we go. I really wanted to thank the board and just talk about the fact that the first three weeks of school have gone as smoothly as they have. From the standpoint of me being the LPUT president, a teacher in the high school, and a parent of two kids in the elementary school, I just think that, just wanted to share some gratitude about the fact that although we have immense restrictions, we haven't had, we have had the ability to get our kids in school unlike some other districts that are going fully remote. So I just wanted to thank the board, the building administrators, the superintendent, the assistant superintendents. There's been great communication between all of us and the fact that we have kids in school, albeit two days a week and one day virtually, and that we're making it happen despite all of the restrictions that we have is something I feel like we should be real proud of. And I just wanted to say thank you and I hope that these restrictions are able to change as the school year goes on. And the teachers would love to see their students every day. And I know the students would love to make that happen as well. But we have some parameters working against us, so. Thank you for all the good communication. I'm hoping that translated.
Okay, Mr. Edwards, as soon as you're ready, you can turn on your mic and video if you choose.
Doctor Edwards, excuse me.
That's fine. So I just want to make a couple of points on things that that I've experienced in this as a parent and from points of view as a scientist and also as a, you're getting a little feedback from your side, I think. Maybe it's mine. Okay, so I'd like to point out that the communication has been really good. I've really appreciate, appreciated the communication that we've had so far. That's including Mr. Hill's updates on technology. It's included the reopening updates. And I even appreciate the vagueness in the pointing out of where we just don't know enough information yet. And we're waiting on New York State health guidelines. The goal I think all of us have, and certainly me, my goal, my objective as a parent, especially with the graduating senior, I want to have in-person classes for him. And also my two other children. And I do not want to have weeks of a free-for-all of in-person classes with no regulations and then online learning for the rest of the year. I feel like a lot of people aren't thinking through where we are going if we relax the restrictions to nothing. If we proceed with these guidelines, we will be able to have as much sports as we can. We'll be able to have as long as a in-person, although hybrid, learning environment. I also want to point out that while some of the things we're doing are not necessarily mandates from the state, that's not the same thing as saying that we are not using the best practices put out by the state. And I feel like our education of our students, our children, should not be the least common denominator, but the best that we can do for them. On a health side note, I feel like although perhaps in a school system our size, perhaps only a couple of students, a couple of our children would be hospitalized and severely sick if we relax these restrictions. I think the casualties among the faculty would be severe. And I don't think that's any, anything that we want to plan and have as an objective, just to take our masks off. I'm pretty satisfied with the safety measures and this hybrid model is the best that we can do. With the temp checks, keeping people out, yes, it's inconvenient. Yes, it's terrible if you have to go home, you have to arrange daycare. But this is the thing we need to do to keep our school system running instead of going completely online, which no one wants. Thanks, that's it.
To open up attendance to all board members where we had first thought we would be able to do it in person with, which would extremely limit attendance, but everyone is welcome. Actually, the links will be going out tomorrow, possibly tomorrow. And it will be on Saturday from 8:30 a.m. until approximately 10 o'clock. So what we'll be looking at specifically, we'll have legislators from the state level, the county level, and also Congressman Chris Jacobs. So we'll have a full roundtable of elected officials that will be able to address the concerns. Superintendents will be presenting specifically on the fiscal crisis and the impacts to our 13 districts in Orleans and Niagara County. And then we will also be having board members who will be addressing broadband connectivity and access in counties and which is, we've identified as one of the critical issues as well as the impacts on public health. So everybody tune in, 8:30 a.m. Saturday. October 5th, the Policy Review Committee meeting will precede the work session at 6 o'clock. And/or Committee Chair, would you like to discuss policy review with us?
We are working through, at this point, you'll see that there are new policies, three new policies related to the new activities regarding online learning and online, or shall I say also, remote work. So for the staff, teachers and staff, as well as employees that we'll be looking through today. But going forward, we are simply reviewing the existing policies as they come up through the timeline of typical review and there is nothing terribly earth-shattering coming up, but we'll be, we'll be working through the entire policy manual during the course of the year.
Right. Also, on October 8th is the NOSBA meeting. On October 19th, Superintendent Student Advisory, which will be meeting via Zoom. Paul, would you like to say something about student advisory?
We've got a new group of students that are coming in. We're excited about it. It was originally scheduled for mid-morning, but recognizing that students are virtual that day, we moved the timing off until after their classes are over, so I think we're starting at 1:30 on that date. They've been updated. So excited to get the students back on board to have their feelings and understandings heard regarding our COVID reopening, which are a key aspect, obviously, of our district goals. And then also to start to discuss a little bit about our strategic plan and moving that forward, which is our second piece of our district goal. So we're going to have our students, as we have through the Student Advisory Council, involved in the district goal-setting process and furthermore informing us as to actions and those kinds of things. So we're excited about it. I'm excited about it always because it's great to see some of those young people that I've been with since they were in seventh grade and many of them are now seniors, and I'm excited to work with them.
Great. Facility Planning Committee meeting on the 20th. Is there any facility updates?
We are proceeding with the, to get the bids and timetable worked out for the next phase of the construction. And there are initial efforts right now. You'll be seeing more about the tent facility, I suppose, tent classrooms that will be available. And working on the athletic fields. And we are not involved in the paving of the purpose. That is not part of-
It's not. That was great timing, though. I know, no offense, State Department of Transportation. Okay, Health and Wellness Committee will meet on the 26th. Anything to discuss in advance? Okay, regular board meeting then on October 26th and the PTSA will meet on the 28th. Anything about PTSA? In advance?
They, I know they're working on getting a new spiritware order together and they're also trying to get rid of some of their old spiritware gear that they've been posting on Facebook. So if you're looking for spiritware, maybe check out our, the PTSA's Facebook page.
Okay, very good. And we will be recognizing the PTSA a little bit later in our meeting for the donation that they made to enable us to purchase tents for our new outdoor learning space. Okay, we're going to go to our first presentation, which is with Lumsden McCormick and the presentation of our external audit.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me? You can? I can hear you. Can you wave if you can hear me?
We could hear you. We just wanted to make-
Okay, um, I will try to keep this as brief as possible. I know there's a lot going on in the district this year. This is just to present your June 30th, 2020 audit, which was also impacted by COVID. For the first time, we did the majority of our work virtually. So thank you to Patty and all of her staff because in addition to all of the things they had to deal with relative to COVID, they had to deal with scanning and sending us a ton of files for the audit. We had, I think we were out there for two days with fewer staff trying to limit our contact. And so we really appreciate all of the business office's help with all of that. You hire us to render an opinion on your financial statements. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion, which is what you're hoping for, meaning they're fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Within your financial statements, you'll find that report and two other reports. One in accordance with Yellow Book. And do you have the presentation that, did you see that? Because I could share my screen if I'm allowed to do that, if you don't-
Yes, you can share your screen.
Okay. Do you see that? Okay. There you go, sorry. All right, so also included within the financial statements is the report in accordance with government auditing standards. We had no matters in that report, as well as a report in accordance with the Uniform Guidance, which you're required because you have federal funding in excess of $750,000. Your funding was slightly higher, just under 1.1 million this year. There were some reductions in certain programs and that was offset by increases in the child nutrition program, which was again really a function of COVID and the additional federal funding that came in for breakfasts and lunches. You're deemed to be a low-risk audity because we haven't had findings over a certain time period and various other requirements, so we're required to only test 20% of your federal expenditures. However, we tested the special education cluster this year, which accounts for about 50% of your federal expenditures. And we had no findings and no question cost relative to that testing. We'll file a data collection form once the audit has been approved. That includes an upload of the financial statements that goes to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse detailing your federal grants. We issue an extra classroom statement of cash receipts and disbursements. I'll go through some recommendations we have relative to the clubs again at the end. You had about $107,000 in club balances as of June 30th, which is similar to the balance you had at the end of last year, but you were actually down about $70,000 in club activity this year, again because of COVID, students not being able to fundraise and then obviously not being able to go on trips and do other events. There's also a communication with those charged with governance in a management letter that I'll briefly summarize after going through the numbers. So on the summary of funds, this is the fund basis financial statements, which is really your budget. You can see that fund balance in the general fund went up about $369,000 from the prior year. You use that to fund some reserves. So you have the board-approved funding of the tax surcharge reserve for some tax- And then the only other significant change is in encumbrances, and that's just timing as well as some potential transportation costs that are encumbered in there. So your unassigned fund balance of 1.4 million is within the threshold. It's not supposed to exceed 4% of next year's budget, and it was at 2.9%. So you're in compliance. In the capital projects fund, you had a deficit fund balance of 8.4 million. That is just a function of where you are on financing for the project. You're currently financing it with short-term bond anticipation notes. Once you convert those to bonds, they will come in as income and eliminate that deficit. You had about $5.2 million worth of spending on the middle school project phase two this year, which is what caused that reduction in fund balance. Your school lunch fund did actually, it had a loss of about 18,000, but the operations did improve over the prior year. Your revenue was almost identical, although your sales were down. As I mentioned previously, your funding from the federal government because of COVID was up, and then your expenses were down because of less meals served. So in all in all, you had a total fund balance of all funds of a deficit 1.4 million. Again, nothing to be concerned about. That is just a function of timing on financing for those capital projects. So a couple quick graphs just on your general fund. You can see that revenue, there's really not much to say here. Those charts look almost identical year to year, especially state aid. You had a whopping 0.6% increase in revenue year to year. No significant changes here. On the expenditure side, which hopefully you can see this okay. On the expenditure side, your salaries were not up very much. Any contractual rate increases were offset by retirements, so being replaced by lower-salaried employees. On the employee benefit side, retirement system costs are the required contributions to the teacher's retirement system and the employee's retirement system. For the teacher's retirement system, those rates went down from 10.62% of salaries to 8.86% during 2020. So that's the reason for that reduction. And then there's a slight increase for 2021 to 9.53%. So you'll see a bit of an increase next year. Health insurance was relatively consistent, the same with payroll taxes. Debt service, you had the first payment. You issued the larger band last year of 8.75 million. So the first payment was due on that, and that was paid out of the general fund. BOSI services, some increases due to additional special education students and services. And then offset by a bit of a decrease in transportation and other costs, reductions in transportation, again, as a result of COVID and less days that students needed to be transported, offset by some equipment purchases in the general fund. There's always two methods of accounting on a governmental financial statement. So this is now the government-wide summary of the full accrual basis. This includes the district as a whole. It includes all of your buildings and equipment net of depreciation. It includes all of your long-term debt, and it also includes the actuarial calculations for the district's pension liabilities to TRS and ERS, and the calculations for your other post-employment benefits. So that's benefits to certain retirees of basically health insurance that's paid for by the district, as well as having employees upon retirement who are able to continue in the district's health insurance at their own cost. So when you look at everything together, that decrease in current assets is really just a decrease in the district's overall cash because you spent most of those bond proceeds or band proceeds during 1920 on the project. The increase in capital assets is where the increase in the projects are. However, you don't see such a big increase because it's net of about $3.5 million of depreciation expense that was recognized on all of the district's assets during 2020. The pension, OPEB, and deferred resources line, in reality, on the financial statements, those are about six or seven different lines within your statement of net position. I just pulled them all out and put them together so they didn't skew all of the other lines. So when you factor them in altogether, you come to a net pension asset of 1.5 million or net asset in all of those things, OPEB too. That's really a result of the teacher's retirement system being fully funded, as well as timing of when things go into certain categories. That's all calculated by actuaries. The only impact on the budget is your actual cash expenses, not any of the actuarial assumptions. They don't impact the budget at all. On the liability side, your long-term liabilities went down due to current year payments on bonds, and that was then, you know, going forward, once you, once you convert that band to a bond, you'll have an increase in those long-term liabilities. And then other liabilities includes the bond anticipation note, accounts payable, and amounts due to retirement system. So that reduction is primarily because of that reduction in the contribution rate to TRS. So those are the amounts outstanding at year-end to pay in for 2020. Moving on, oh, sorry. This page is really just like a word explanation of what is on the page prior. Same information I just said to you, just in words instead of just numbers. The communication with those charged with governance is a standard report to you. There are certain estimates within your financial statements, and the, they don't change much from year to year. Your estimates, for the most part, stay the same. The only additional estimate this year is on the collectibility of amounts outstanding from New York State. As you're probably aware, there's been information coming out about 20% withholdings on state aid and BOSI's aid, and that it won't be withheld. So those amounts are currently an estimate of what the district expects to collect of those amounts. Your other estimates are mostly those actuarial assumptions. We point out the significant footnote disclosures. Mostly it's debt and where those big estimates are, so pensions and OPEB. And then we also added Note 12 this year, risks and uncertainties, which is really just a general comment relative to COVID-19 and the uncertain impact that it has on the district and on your financial statements. Not only the impact of what will happen with your state aid, but what will happen with other funding, what happens to the residents of the district, businesses within the district, and how that may impact the district going forward as well. Nothing else of significance in this report. The only open item is management representations. We'll send that to Patty after this meeting. That's just the final piece that she and the superintendent signed, telling us they've disclosed everything we've asked for, for the audit. And the final page is a summary of our management letter. If we had found any material weaknesses in your internal controls, we would be required to include those in this letter. We did not. So the items we have here are just our comments and observations. They're detailed. More information in the packet you should have received that has the full management letter in it. This is just a brief summary. Basically, just the repair reserve. If amounts aren't being used for emergency purposes, then you're required to have a public hearing. So we're just reminding you of that point. I think a lot of your usage is for emergency purposes, and then it just has to be replenished within two years. Your capital asset records, we discussed this before. This is just a reminder to contact your third-party appraisal company, update their records. They had missed various projects over the years, so there's manual calculations currently being done for depreciation on some of those assets. And the third bullet is on your extra classroom activities. That's your clubs. This is things like ensuring the balance is reconciled to the bank statement, that there's student treasurers in place, that there's proper documentation supporting club activities and signatures. Some of this stuff, I understand, was a bit more difficult this year because of COVID and people not being around. And then just in accordance with board policy, if there are inactive clubs, those should be transferred to student council. The final, and the management letter, second to last piece, is a couple informational points about new accounting pronouncements. Maybe the one good thing about COVID was that it delayed implementation of some of these accounting pronouncements, so we didn't have to implement anything this year. So GASB 84 will be effective for next year. That impacts the accounting for your trust and agency funds, which is really just your extra classroom clubs and your payroll liabilities. Not a huge impact. It'll just change some of that. GASB 87 and GASB 96 are relative to leases and then subscription, subscriptions relating to IT, and accounting for those a little bit differently, and that's 21 and 23. And then the prior year recommendation is just to ensure that interest is allocated to your reserves in accordance with either general municipal law or education law for those reserve funds. That is as brief as I could try to make it on the financial statements. Do you have any questions? I can't hear, so if you do, that might be tricky.
It seems like we do not have any questions right now.
Okay, great. I heard that. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thanks again to the business office for all of our help, all of their help getting through this year's audit.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi.
Very grateful to the Lewis and Porter PTSA for their donation of $9,000 for outdoor tents to provide alternative learning environment for our teachers and students, which is extremely important right now during the pandemic. So Paul, do you want to say anything about the tents?
Well, the tents are going to afford us an opportunity for students to be able to, you know, so currently, right now, in all of our buildings, when the students finish lunch, they're able to get outside and just to kind of be socially distanced, but get outside and take their masks off and have a break. So obviously, we know the weather is going to start to change, and we're going to have the tents in proximity to those areas so that the students can use them during lunch, the extra time during lunch. But then also, this will be opportunities for phys ed to continue to go outside and to, you know, again, in a socially-distanced fashion, under the tent, you know, use them as appropriate. There may also be opportunity for students during recess to use them, and that we are also looking at the possibility where teachers could, depending on how we're able to, we're able to put them in the areas we're able to, for teachers to go out there and use them if they want to. Currently, right now, there are some teachers who are taking their students outside for classroom discussions and those kinds of things. And this will just afford us an opportunity to extend that as further as we can into the fall before the weather really starts to turn.
And this wasn't as, as easy as just putting up some tents?
No. Whether it's tents or any other structure on your property, the school property, it requires significant state education department oversight. And so Dr. Grupka has been working with the PTSA and the state education department. You're going to be approving tonight a SEAKER, which is basically an environmental quality review for tents. So it's, nothing is easy when it comes to the New York State Department of Education or the bureaucracy that we are faced with. So we would have liked to have the tents up much sooner, obviously, as the weather starts to turn. I asked Dr. Grupka about looking at heaters for the tents, but the heaters require significant state education department approval. So, and they require certain open sides of the tents. So we are looking at that, but don't know if that's going to be able to be pulled off quickly. So the tents are going to be just available for students to go outside until the weather really starts to turn.
All right. Thank you.
Patty, anything else you wanted to add to that? Did I cover?
I'm just saying I'm really grateful for this support of the PTSA.
Yeah, they've been great.
You know, we probably wouldn't have been able to do this without all the other expenses we've had. So I think this is going to be great for the kids. The tents are going to be fire resistant. So we went for SED to pick out the materials and the weight of the tents and.
Well, and the really nice thing about it is now we have the tents. The tents.
They're going to be able to stay up.
Yes.
In the winter.
Well, as deep, as deep into it as we can get, you know.
Do they come down in the winter?
We'll have to eventually take them down, yeah.
They'll come down in the winter. I'm told that the company that we buy these from provides some areas where.
Oh, all right. I was understanding that we'd be taking them down.
But they can theoretically stay up.
Like they have that big tent up at the basement.
Yeah. But there are tents. There are going to be our tents, correct?
Yes.
So.
I was wondering about, you know.
Eventually, our people will be taking them up and putting them down.
Eventually, they would. They, literally, you can leave them up all year, is what they're telling me.
With coats on, kids can go outside for 10 minutes even in the winter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. Well, we'll see how it plays out then.
And just, just for those watching at home, how many tents?
We currently own one tent already that is from the same company, so it's the same quality. And PTSA is buying us three more fantastic tents.
So each building will have its own tent.
The PTSA tents should be 20 by 40. So.
All right.
They'll have a nice size. Students.
And.
And then we're going to be doing wedding receptions.
Revenue somehow, right?
Absolutely.
I do believe that we have Virginia McCullough live with us via Zoom. Virginia is the District-Wide PTSA President. Hello, Virginia.
Oh, hi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, now we can.
Excellent. Hi. Yeah, just real quickly, I want to say that we're so excited about this. This was something that came up for vote with our board and our committee chairs, and it was unanimously approved. Everybody was, it was really like a no-brainer on our part. But obviously, this kind of contribution is not something that just kind of appears magically overnight. So I want to thank our membership. I want to thank our board and our committee chairs. This is a group of volunteers that, we have a very experienced group we have had for the last few years. And I think that this, this funding availability really is a direct result of everybody's commitment and their motivation and their creativity with a lot of the fundraising that we've been doing. And I also, obviously, would like to extend a big thank you to the district board, to our teachers, and to our administrators, and just supporting the PTSA in every way that you do. And we're really, really grateful to be able to make this contribution to the district. So thank you. And I think we have some of our other volunteers who are joining us via Zoom. So, so thanks, guys, if you can hear me.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have the.
There's the check. There's the check. Danielle Mullen, our board member and PTSA extraordinaire.
We do have, if you want to.
Just show, show everybody.
Yay.
There's the check. Thank you. PTSA.
You can, we're just so excited to have that, that check. So once again, thank you, Virginia. Thank you to everyone in the PTSA, your support of just every initiative in this district and everything that you do is just absolutely amazing, and this was definitely very much appreciated, and it's going to make a world of difference to our students and our teachers going forward in this really unprecedented year. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to recognize the Primary Education Center and the High School, which both earned distinction of the recognition schools from the State of New York Education Department. Mr. Seri.
Do you have the certificates? So we were, becoming a recognition school or a reward school from the New York State Department of Education is largely based on student performance on the state assessments as well as student performance on the Regents exams. And as we know, the assessments, the three-through-eight assessments have often been recently met with some controversy, but taken at face value, they do represent a piece of data. And students performing well on those assessments is something that we always strive for. And so it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to recognize the hard work that goes into the planning from Dr. Lyon's office through the principals, through the peer coordinators, but really the work of the teachers to, again, be very diagnostic in their approach to teaching and learning, to focus in on students.
and learning, to focus in on students in terms of learning gaps, addressing those gaps, and preparing students to be ready for those state assessments. We received, obviously, and this is kind of mirrors how well we do with the, in business first, and so as you know, we do very well there, and largely that, that ranking is based on, purely on state test scores. So it goes without saying that because we have a very high rank, that we would be recognized for excellent performance. And so our performance was, and it's always based on year to year, and it's also based on comparison to like schools. And so our primary education center, which has a small number of test takers, but always does exceptionally well on that. And then our high school, which again, as you wanted to, Michelle's bringing that over. So our high school has always done exceptionally well.
That's the Zoom part of Zoom.
Ranking in the top 10 in a number of our content areas, our social studies program being the number one school district in Western New York in terms of region scores. And we're always so exceptionally proud of the work that happens there. And, and obviously, the Regents exams at the high school are exit level exams. They are required to, for a child to graduate from high school. So they have significant meaning and significant importance. And Lewiston Porter's High School being recognized as a recognition school points to the, just the outstanding work that takes place on a daily basis with, with our teachers working with our students to prepare them for those exams. So we're very proud of both schools. That's not to say that we're not proud of the IEC and the middle school, which have continued to see great gains over the past few years. And I'm certain that with continued growth, certainly both of those schools are well on their way to being considered, quote, recognition schools. But regardless, I have, certainly in my time as the superintendent, am moving away from less focus on those state assessments and more focus on the development of, or defining student success for our students K through 12 that is multi, multi-pronged and multifaceted, and not just on one snapshot in time on one day. So again, always good data points. We're very proud of the work that takes place, but we know that what we do here at Lewiston Porter is always so much more than just state, state test scores. And if we continue to focus on all of those pieces to the puzzle, not only are the state test scores going to get better naturally, but then the learning experience for our students over, over a 12-year timeframe will continue to grow and get better so that they are not prepared just to do well on tests, but they're prepared to do well in life once they leave us, to do well in, for, so for instance, to do well at college, university in the midst of a global pandemic where they need to be technologically savvy, which has always been a key component to our work district wide. And we continue to use that as a key definition of student success, along with many others. So very proud of that work. Congratulations to the folks at the high school, the folks at the primary education center. But more importantly, I do want to say that to our friends at the IEC and the middle school, we've continued to see growth there, and we don't want to leave you all out. So we're proud of all of you. So thank you.
I really, I really appreciate that because as a mother with four children, you, you don't want to, sometimes you want to celebrate the two, but you got to recognize all four.
Correct.
Appreciate that.
Correct. But the, the truth of the matter is despite the fact that it doesn't maybe match up to or reach a level, we are seeing gains at both of those schools in certain areas.
Absolutely.
Dr. Lyon.
I just want to say that part of the ability to achieve this status is based on participation in the assessments themselves.
Correct.
And so you have to be at a 95% participation rate to even qualify to be acknowledged here. That's easy at a high school level with Regents exams, right? And since we only are testing a handful of students at the PEC, that makes it a little bit easier in that respect.
Correct.
It is a little bit harder when you're talking about all of the students at the IEC and all the students at the middle school. But even if they met the threshold for everything else, the participation would, would not allow them to rise to this level of recognition, and yet they're certainly both were.
Absolutely. And as I said, you, we've, we've shown the data and we start, and we are seeing gains there. So we're excited about that, and we want to continue to focus on that, along with many other aspects of our work with our young people here, not just those test scores.
Great. Well, again, congratulations to the administrators and teachers and students at the primary education center and the high school for this recognition. At this point, we're going to move on to board member comments.
Can I just, a quick comment?
I'm sorry.
So we kind of skipped over administrative reports.
Oh, my goodness.
So the, you have the administrative reports that were submitted by.
We totally skipped over that.
And I, we, I would like to say, and Dr. Lyon can give a brief update on kind of where we're at in terms of the teaching and learning with, and we just had a great meeting with our, our teacher union representatives. There were some changes being made, but we wanted to show you the dashboard, the COVID dashboard, to show you the data in there, but we were having difficulty. It looked like it was down. Is it, is it still down? If it's still, if it is down, we'll certainly give a little presentation. No.
Well, let's go back to, that was totally unintentional. I apologize.
So we're not, so we're not able to get that.
Yeah, well, let's, let's pick up our administrative reports where we should have right after the committee schedules and reports. So first up, Dr. Heather Lyon.
Hello.
Hello.
I'd like to start by talking about some updates regarding teaching and learning, but I'm going to end with the catchers of the week for this month. So in terms of teaching and learning, we have for this school year for our hybrid students who are not on campus at the secondary level, specifically, we have coupled attendance and work. So every day, the students have an assignment that they need to do for each class, and that class, that assignment needs to be submitted right now by 11:59 PM, and that counts as the attendance and the learning. We made that decision because we wanted to ensure that our families, our students, and our faculty understood how important teaching and learning was for our students even when they're not on campus. That said, we thought about that in a theoretical model because we did it before we ever done, right? We created the plan before we ever had a chance to implement it. Upon implementation, when you're talking about 50 to 60 students that may be asynchronous on any given day, managing keeping up with that attendance portion of it has proven to be more time consuming than we initially anticipated, such that it is impacting the amount of time that teachers have to devote to providing students with feedback and planning for teaching and learning and all the ways that we really want them. If we, you know, we only have this amount of time, how do you want it spent? You don't want it spent on keeping track of attendance. You want it spent on teaching and learning. So we're making some changes. So I want to let you know that at the secondary level, we've created a form that students will, at the secondary level, will be completing on a daily basis. And the form asks for four pieces of information. Your first name, your lab name, your homeroom or first period teacher, and then it asks you to check a box that says, I have or will complete all of my learning for today. That form will allow the students to either be present for every class because we're responsible for period by period attendance, or they'll be absent for every class because that one form is the singular form that they'll have to complete on a daily basis. And we are taking that review of that, that attendance form. So we're decoupling attendance and the teaching and learning, although within the attendance, we're having kids pledge that they're going to be doing the work, right? But in that decoupling, we're taking that keeping track of all of that clerical management piece and putting it back into the main office. We have attendance clerks, right? Or we have teacher aides that are assigned to do that work, which will free up the teachers to be able to do the teaching and learning that we really want them to do. And truthfully, it's quite time consuming, given all of the moving pieces and the learning work that they have in that process. So I want you to know about that.
So Dr. Lyon, just so, you know, you know how I feel about, how I've felt about this conversation.
I sure do.
And so what is to, what, what will teachers be looking for? So I'm a kid. I fill out the form each day. I check the box, but then I go and play on my Xbox all day.
Right. This, this form is strictly for attendance purposes. And so if you want to count as present, that's one thing, but in order to count as doing the work, you actually have to still do the work. There's still work that the students will have to do on a daily basis for their teacher to demonstrate the teaching and learning that, that's expected.
Okay.
Will it still be 11:59?
It's still 11:59 to get clean and consistent.
To get that work in.
So it is, but it is no longer necessarily that they will have a busy work type of assignment from every single teacher for every period that they have to, if they're working on a long-term project, that that's good enough as long as you're showing project, process, progress.
Right.
Right. Because that was kind of what we were burdening some of the students too, that they had like 11 assignments a day.
Right.
Right.
So the, what we are able to do now is to ensure a higher, higher level of rigor in terms of the assignments that the kids are going to be assigned to do so that it's not just compliance based in order to meet the attendance threshold.
Right.
But all students will have work to do.
Daily.
Daily.
From.
So those students who want to click yes to the attendance but not do the work, that's the same thing as coming to school, not do, and not doing your homework, because we can mark you as present by being here, but that doesn't mean you're doing the learning. And so there's still onus on the students, and there's still onus on the teachers in terms of following up with students and families if they're not doing the work that is needed to be done.
And that was assured to me by not just Dr. Grupka, or Dr. Lyon, excuse me. Dr. Grupka also assured of that as well because she knew where I was with this as well, because I've been very vocal about it. And, but the, but the conversation that we had with the teachers union, they were quite clear that they recognized that the community needs to know and expect that there are expectations on the asynchronous days, and that this is just not, we still have very high expectations for work on those days, and that there needs to be teacher follow-through to make sure that students are maintaining that work, and administrator follow-through to make sure that students are completing those assignments and staying with those projects and those kinds of things. So that, that was my concern. I don't want the community to think that, you know, there's just, it's willy-nilly on these asynchronous days, that regardless of whether the teacher took the attendance or an attendance clerk took the attendance, there is still expectations for learning on those asynchronous days, and it will be followed through with.
He's looking at me, right? Like I, like I think differently.
No, no, I know you do. I just, you know, my, my concern has always been that I wanted to make sure that if a parent left for work in the morning and their sophomore and freshman and sophomore were home, that they could trust that on those asynchronous days, that there was work to be done, and, and, you know, when they come home, what did you complete today? You know? So I'm still hoping and hopeful that those expectations will be maintained regardless of whether they're linked to attendance or not.
I want to again emphasize, this is a six through 12 change at the elementary level because they only have, you know, a handful of students, 24 or fewer in any given classroom, and they're, they're with the same teacher all day, you know, they, there are multiple teachers. It's a much more manageable task at an elementary level.
And quite frankly, the elementary teachers didn't want it. They, they feel like it's working for them.
Yeah.
So they wanted to stay with what they had.
Yeah. So I want you to know that, I want you to know that we had a very robust and important conversation last week about the students who are currently in a hybrid model who may for whatever reason want to switch to a remote model. Theoretically, that doesn't require any planning because the space issue isn't at play. However, what is at play is a case load issue of how, of the student to teacher ratio with any given student. So we had important conversations about that last week. So K through five, the student to teacher ratio is one to 30. Six through 12 is one to 40. Remember, those students at the secondary, or those teachers at the secondary level are liaisons. They're not teaching the kids per se, but let me just tell you, the case management for those students is pretty darn intensive because of keeping track of all the different courses that the kids are taking. No two students have the same schedule in terms of the courses that they're taking. And then for our special education teachers at the secondary, they have a one to 20 case load. And so with that in mind, Rhonda Shaya, who is the administrative assistant for remote students, parents who are looking to make a shift either from hybrid to remote or remote to hybrid, we contact her, and she would have them complete a form indicating that that's the change that they want to make so that we have documentation of that and get the process rolling. She, there are certain grade levels where starting a student remotely can be done tomorrow because we have GIB. There are other grade levels where there's not as much GIB, which is in part why we're also having a waitlist for students to go from remote to hybrid, because that would make available a seat potentially without tipping the need for an additional SCAD member. So we're trying to be really thoughtful about our resources. And then the last piece that you should know is about the tutors and the graders for our APEX students or our six through 12 remote learners. So for every class that we offer in APEX, there is a Luport teacher who is assigned to be that tutor. And the students through the middle school, they go through their liaison because their liaisons want to make sure that they're following through, because you're talking about 11, 12, 13-year-olds. And as well for our students with disabilities, that level of support and assistance. At the high school, the students are a little bit more independent in terms of they'll contact the tutor. And for all of our courses in APEX, except the APs, they are teacher, I'm sorry, they are computer graded courses, so no teacher needs to do any grading with that. The exception is the APs because of the rigor of the exam. You want to ensure that they're getting quality feedback from a Luport teacher in order to ensure their success. Any questions about that, so before I bring the catchers of the week? Okay. So the first catch of the week this year is Paula Singleton, and she was actually caught back in March. So by Sherry at the IEC. So Paula, though, she caught, she caught Dana Peterson at the IEC. She said, Dana deserves this honor due to her endless commitment to keep all of our school community and especially myself and our staff informed up to date and trained in all things seesaw, pool classroom, and the numerous activities. She's always available and has answered my phone calls in the evening as well as on weekends. She's kind, caring, very patient. She has combed many scorny seeds these past weeks, and I am forever grateful to be her colleague and friend. Last Friday, she sent our staff apprehension and stress about the first virtual Monday. She sent a kind reassuring email to all of us offering her help and advice if we could get through it. if we could get through it and we could learn through whatever happened on Monday. I'm not sure she knows how helpful that was to myself and others at the moment, not to mention her intuition's spot on thanks to Google. Congratulations, Dana, and thank you. On a side note, huge shout out and thank you to all our HLP district tech support staff. Your efforts and support are greatly appreciated. Dana is part of the IUC tech team with Bethany Kaminsky, who was previously caught and quite worthy of being caught again. These two stepped on the big way, both last spring with the closing of school and this fall with the hardest start of the school year ever. Thank you does not begin to cover how I feel about these two power techs and lazy ladies." So, what a nice shout out, right? And then, so Dana Peterson was the catcher, and she caught Yopasta. My catch of the week in the middle school, is middle school teacher aide and PTSA vice president, Yopasta Muneo. Yopasta is a compassionate person with a great sense of humor. She is a teacher aide in the 12-month class at the middle school, who is always there for students. Yopasta has done so much for so many of the students and teachers at Loopport with her continuous dedication and active involvement in our PTSA. We are so lucky to have her at Lewiston Porter. So now you're on a hens of needles about who Yopasta caught, but you won't know. You can bring it on this Thursday, and I will share it with the whole community next month.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm happy to have the return, at least of that normalcy of the catch of the week.
I am as well.
You don't realize how much you miss something until it's gone. All right, Dr. Grupka.
So, as you saw, I've been busy with auditors. We were actually shoring up the audit early up until about 5:15 today, to some last-minute items. When they talked about the capital, that some of that was actually, when they said we hadn't borrowed yet, some of that was the middle school emergency project. So when you think about all the things that happened during the year, a lot happens and a lot goes on. Can you, now can you pull the report card up?
Dashboard.
It's the 119 report, is what it's called.
I've got it up on my Chromebook.
Yeah, it's coming up. I was able to get it. So, in addition to, I've been spending almost every day, including weekend days, on the phone with the Department of Health. It's been really, they've been really wonderful and very supportive. I can't say enough about the interactions that I've had with them when we've been looking for advice or guidance. They did a great job, and they were very responsive when we had an issue here. So, you know, I wish we never had to work with them. But the reality is, it's, it's gone much smoother than I had anticipated. So, I'm very grateful to have them to work with. New York State has...
Yeah, mine comes up.
Mine comes up as well. So if you can log into the, if you go into...
It's, um, School District, it's one word. School COVID Report Card. And then you just go down and you plug in Lewiston Porter.
It works on my phone.
This is a Chromebook, right?
I've got it up on my Chromebook.
I can't get it on your Chromebook.
No.
I've got it on mine. If you just type in one of the stuff.
No, the problem is, um, and...
Do you want to join her Chromebook?
Me?
Anyway, you can have the, Cindy, the...
I can join soon.
Paul's got it on his Chromebook.
And I've got it on mine.
It's right there. Why don't you just, why don't you just plug this in?
Well, that will start here.
Are you on it, Heather? Okay. I was gonna say, I've been...
I got it.
Okay.
So I have sent you copies of the form that I actually fill out. And I actually give more information than what they include in the public report card, because what the state asks me is for a breakdown of teachers, students, and other employees in each building every day, the ones that we anticipate being here, and the ones that we anticipate being completely remote. And then they ask a few different questions. They ask...
Well, Dr. Grupka, why don't you help us? So, on Lewiston Porter Central School District, County Niagara, lab reported positive based on residential address. We have four.
Yes.
What does that mean?
So some of them, some of the positives happened prior to school starting, but they were reported on the weekend before school started.
Okay.
So on the first day of school, we had put those numbers in. Those were kids who were supposed to be here on that day that were not here because of a positive.
Got it. So even though the dashboard started after those students were considered positive, because they were, the dashboard started on the 9th, and those kids, we found out on like the 6th or 7th.
Yes.
So, when I see lab-reported positive based on resident, that's four. Total students on and off-site, four. Total onsite, we've had one student, correct?
You're looking at a different page, yes. We've had one student on, who actually was onsite and was positive.
And then we had three off-site.
Yes.
Prior to the start of school.
One, one was quarant, two of them were quarantined and became positive.
Right, right.
Positive after they were quarantined, so it is...
But they were, never came on campus.
They were never on campus.
Correct. So we have a total of four students, total.
Yes.
One that was on campus.
Yes.
For a certain period of time.
Yes. So, what they're asking, what they're asking for me for information is, by building the number of staffs, the number of positives, the number of people we send home with symptoms. So that could be anybody who has sniffles, or runny nose, um, any, a cough, a chronic cough. Something, anyone who has chronic allergies might be sent home. So we report that. We report anyone who's presenting a test. And then we certify that, at the end of the day, that we, that we inform Niagara County of any, of any positives. And that's new. Originally, they wanted to, I'm going to certify that we inform them of everything. We were not, we were not doing that. I started doing that through email. But the news is, we won't have to do that. So, if you can get to the public school site, are we almost there?
That's it.
That's it.
Hey, yours looks totally different than mine.
Because yours, yours is the...
No, no, I'm on the public site, and it's totally different.
No, this is the, mine, mine looks exactly like that. Everybody else's looks exactly like that. You must be on something different.
Patty, maybe you click towards Lewiston Porter CSD, that takes you to like a different screen. I'll push you. I don't know if that's what Patty's looking at.
Maybe because you have credentials to enter information.
I wonder if it...
Yeah. Like you're an admin, basically.
I'm the same, I have a dress.
No, 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 Patty, does it look like this to you?
Yes.
You just saw a different page.
I'll just show you how I got there.
That's just the, that's just the front page of the, the drill down.
Right. I mean, you type in Lewiston Porter, because it asks me to select the school district.
It doesn't give me that.
And it takes me here. And then when I click this, it takes me to this...
Right. If you just click on the blue that says CSD, it'll take it to that.
Got it. Nope. So...
So, does anybody, I mean, it, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's a little convoluted, but at the same time, it's pretty straightforward. So, I know it's not...
So basically, when it comes, when it's, they show up in the column that says off-site, that means they were maybe a remote student or someone who's never been on, in, on campus while they were...
Yes.
Correct. So we...
The data, they're acutely aware that the data is going to be hiding and accurate. Because, because, because you're actually able to set off and to self-report. So if I'm a remote student, why would I report to the school I know?
Yeah, so you're only...
The only way we might find out, the only way we might find out is, is through the county. It, and, and, but, so currently, right now, we're not going to hit, the, we, the only off-site kids or P, or staff that we might get would be those that are currently in the remote model. Everybody else is going to be reported onsite. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. But the reason we have currently four, three off-site, is because they, we learned about them before school started.
Well, one of them we learned about before school started.
Right. And then the other two, right, were, yes, 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 yes. They became positive, but they had been in quarantine because their sibling was positive.
Right. But those remote students may be allowed to play sports, so we would be told of their...
Well, we, we would hope.
We may at least need to let them know.
So that's, that's the other question of, will this be very accurate or not? Niagara County should be telling us when they have students, and that is part of their contact tracing. They will let us know if there's a positive. And they're, they've been doing it within 24 hours of the same day.
But also remember that for every kid that walks out there, the first thing that they have to do is get temperature checked and fill out the questionnaire. They can't start practice without doing that.
Yeah.
Even if they filled it out in the morning, they have to do it again.
We bought the monitors from the coaches.
So any, any kid who's, who's a remote kid who comes on has to, so if they're ill...
Right.
If their parent sends them to practice and they're ill, either A, they're going to get picked up with the temperature, or you would hope that they would respond correctly to the survey.
Well, that's, that's going to be the real key, is, is, you know, we really have to ask families to really respond appropriately and correctly. And if your kid is having symptoms, you know, please don't give them ibuprofen and send them to school.
So this is, this is just the reporting mechanism. Everything else is, would be identifying and recognizing, you know, reporting it all.
The state is collecting, is, the state is really just collecting data. All of the recording, all of the tracking, everything else is really going through half the county. So the assessments, the release from isolation, that is all done at Niagara County level.
And I, I had some questions being asked of me, just from community members. And, and I would just throw out there for anyone watching, you know, looking at this, this looks completely different on your phone. So if you're on your phone and you're trying to look at this screen, it's just, I mean, you, you would notice that anytime you're with a Chromebook or, or a desktop, if your, if your monitor is only so big, you know, even, even things that I do at work, you might lose certain columns, because this doesn't really shrink down necessarily to your, to your screen of your phone. So you might be looking at it and not getting any of those columns, you know, off to the right. So just a caution, if you're looking at that.
Are there any other questions with regard to the dashboard? Okay, thank you.
All right. Patty, do you have anything else that you wanted to report out on?
No, I'm, I, it's fine. But it's what, you'll see my Thursday notes.
Okay. Mr. Casari?
Nothing really to follow up on. You know, obviously, I'm deeply involved in all of those. I would like to say that we had a very productive, first, what we call packed meeting today with our teachers specifically. That's the opportunity that we have to meet and discuss issues, contractual issues, and/or other issues that are, you know, work-related, response, work responsibility-related. And, you know, the great thing about it is the really, and I mentioned it to two, two folks today, is the fact that, I mean, not only are we really working in concert with our teachers and our, and the representatives of the, of our teachers through their bargaining unit. I, I'd like to say that that's taking place with all of our units. Our clerical, our LPAP, the teacher aides and monitors, LPUE, and the CSEA. And I'm, you know, when, when this all first happened, at any given time, there may have been some issues or concerns. But, you know, I'm really proud of the way that we've been able to work through those issues and concerns. And I think it, it has made us stronger and more collaborative on the other side. So, there is, you know, we know the saying, every cloud has a silver lining. And certainly, this is a terribly, terribly dark cloud that we're currently living under. However, the silver lining is how we've been able to work together to meet this challenge head-on. When I say "we," that is all of the employees, from myself right on down, but working closely in concert and in an informed way, I hope, with the Board of Education. I hope you feel informed about what's happening. So, that has been positive, despite the difficulty and the negativity of this whole crises. So, that, that's kind of where, really where I stand right now, in terms of us moving forward. And each day, we take some baby steps in terms of, you know, turning on, as, as the governor says, you know, we're turning the faucet back on, but we just don't turn it on all at once. We have to allow it to start as a drip, and then it starts to become a flow. So now with sports on, we were talking about some, looking at clubs and activities and what can be done in a responsible way. Had a good conversation with Mrs. Townsend and Mrs. Deanna, senior class advisors, on spirit opportunities coming up in October. So we'll be hearing more from about that. So you're going to start to see some things starting to happen. And we'll be cautious and careful. But hopefully, we can start to continue to, to move towards a degree of normalcy and, and create more of an experience for our students. And that's the goal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, sorry for skipping over all of our administrators. We will pick back up then. Where did I leave off? Well, if I left off with board member comments. Jen, I give you an opportunity to collect your thoughts, because you are up first.
I just wanted to thank the PTSA for their very generous donation for the tents. I think they'll be well utilized, and I think teachers and students will be excited to have them. And I just also want to say that I appreciate the Dr. Lyon, Dr. Grupka, Mr. Casari, how they, as any glitches or hiccups come up, how they're addressed right away, not just left to the wayside. So I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm glad that the kids are back in the building in some form.
Thank you. Ann Orr?
I would like to thank the parents for being so dedicated to their children's learning and school experience. I know it's been very difficult. Along with that, I'd like to thank and recognize the dedicated teachers and staff that are making this happen, and clearly putting the students first as far as their learning and their development. And at a time when it must be very difficult to know how they're developing and learning. And the, we're all doing the best we can as far as using science and information and decisions and rules that are coming from the state on down. And I know it, it must be incredibly complex, as Dr. Lyon told us just about doing attendance. Yeah, but it's a trial and error. And everything, as Jennifer said, the addressing things and correcting and making adjustments along the way by every party is really greatly appreciated to show people that we've all got some flexibility, in some regards, not at all. Thanks.
Thank you. Betty Warwick?
I want to say congratulations to the PEC and the high school for their being designated recognition schools. When I, when we mentioned about the IUC and the middle school, they don't just get to high school little mini geniuses, you know, that's the foundation that they've been set for the entire course of the time that they're here. Thank you for the, to the PTSA, obviously, for the, the tent donation. It's very nice to have, and I'm sure the kids will be glad that they can go out there even when it's, you know, raining or inclement weather. One of the things that I noticed when I was reading through the, the written reports that all the administrators submitted, is just how excited everyone seems to be to be back to work and to be back with their colleagues and to have students back in the building. And you could just hear it come through in all their reports, and it was really nice to read those. And I was really, really impressed with the number of teachers who stepped up to become tutors for the 6 through 12. I mean, it was something that we had not even anticipated needing. And all of a sudden, we were like, okay, now we're going to need all these tutors. And as usual, our teachers were right there to step up to the... were right there to step up to the plate and do what they needed to do and thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Emma Fornier.
Hey, hi, everyone. Thank you to our superintendent, Paul Kessari, Loopport administration, all the building representative teachers and staff for a smooth but challenging reopening, but I've heard positive comments from parents, so that's a great thing and I just want to say great job to all of you. I know it's not easy. And thank you to our PTSA generous donation for helping our kids on top of everything that's going on and for everything else that you do for them. Thank you very much.
Charlotte Hupstman.
I'm going to go back and repeat what I've said before as part of what I'm going to say tonight. I watched hours of preparation and planning prior to school from this board, from teachers. I heard of my friends who are teachers talking about the hours that they put in getting ready to start this year. I also watched the excitement, the closer it got, with the understanding that we would need to tweak and adjust as needed. Sitting on this board, I've watched the flexibility occur, the ability to tweak, correct, improve what we've done educationally. Comparative to other districts, I'm acutely aware because I was a teacher and came from a family of teachers. Compared to other districts, I think we're doing a great job. I mean, I, we're, we're out there, we're working and I think we all do have the families and their children in our heart and we want to do best by them. And there will be mistakes, but I'm sure that we will adjust. So, I'm just very thrilled that, you know, everything's going the way it is. Congratulations, PEC, the high school, and thank you again to the PTSA for the tents.
All right, thank you. Danielle Mullen.
I can take your note to everything that everybody has already said. I do think the kids overall are very excited to be back in school across the board. You can see it, the teachers are excited to have their kids back. I'm really, really grateful for all the hard work that the teachers are putting in. I see it every single day, what these teachers do, they go above and beyond for the kids and I'm really, really grateful for that. Thank you to all the administrators, obviously, and to the PTSA for the tents. I'm excited about that. I hope the kids get to utilize them and to Patty, I know that was a lot of language on you, all the hoops you had to jump through to get that to happen. And then obviously, congratulations to the PEC and the high school for their recognition.
All right, thank you. Well, that leaves me and as Danielle said, I think I could say, could say ditto to all of that. This has been incredibly difficult to get our schools reopened, to kind of reimagine what this year is going to look like. It's been very difficult from our students straight up to our administrators and I really think that, as everyone has said, everyone has really risen to the occasion. I cannot thank our teachers and our staff enough. I cannot thank our administrators enough. Everyone's been shouting out, shout out to unsung hero Nick Hill, who has kept us up and running, not just tonight, but straight through. We've never done this before. No one's ever done this before. You know, these, these kids have never done this before and everyone is being just incredibly resilient. So, I just really want to thank everyone. I, I literally can't go anywhere without having somebody come up to me to legitimately just thank the district, to thank us for, for what they're doing on behalf of their kids in this community. And I try to pass it on to all of you as often as I can and this is just a team effort. So, thank you to everyone. And with that, we'll move on to district operations. We usually take a quick recess and I know that there may be some cupcakes that need to take home, which I would be quick to, but we're going to move on to district operations. I would like to move to approve M1, minutes from our August 24 regular meeting, if I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. I'd like to move to approve M2, minutes from our September 14 work session, regular meeting, if I may have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. I would like to move to approve NF1 through NF5, consent agenda for financial operations, if I may have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. I would like to move to approve NA1, policy revision, acceptance of the first reading, if I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. I would like to move to approve NA2, policy deletion, acceptance of the second reading, if I may have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. I would like to move to approve NA3, policy revision, acceptance of the second reading, if I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. I'd like to move to approve NA4, approval of the board goals for 2020 through 2021, if I may have a second.
Second.
Quick discussion, I actually thought of changing them to just say, get through this year, but they're a little bit more detailed than that. So, so thank you, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Like to move on to NA5, approval for district goals for 2020, 2021, if I may have a second. Paul, any discussion?
No, I, same thing. The administrators and I are now working on those, aligning our own goals. I'll be having, my goals will be coming to you on the next work session and then for approval in October, aligned to the district goals and start and meet with principals detailing how they're aligning their own work with the goals, so.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Adoption of the code of conduct, I'd like to move to approve NA6, if I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Would like to move to approve NA7, approval of huber construction contract. This is for the 2020, 2021 Capitol Outlay, if I may have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve NA8, approval of the acceptance of the PTSA donation, if I may have a second.
Second.
Quick discussion, thank you again to the PTSA, absolutely amazing. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve NA9, approval of the secret negative declaration for the tent project, if I may have a second. We're only laughing, for those of you who can see at home, the, what we're going to prove kind of goes on for, this was an enormous amount of work to get these, to get these approved for some tents. Um, all right, did I have a second? I got lost there.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve NA10, approval of the tent project, if I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve NA11, approval of the acceptance of the external audit that was presented to us earlier tonight, if I may have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve, excuse me, moving on to people personnel, like to move to approve MP1, recommendations for CSE placement and amendments, if I may have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve MP2, recommendations for CPSE placement and amendments, if I may have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? So carried. And I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda for personnel, if I may have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried. And I believe that takes us, I'd like to move to adjourn, if I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
So carried. We...